And we're ready whenever you are.
Great. Good evening, Mayor, Council. This evening, we are going to do a work session for Public Works, which includes water and sewer. And if you have enough time this evening and the mental capacity, we can also discuss recreation. So our Public Works Director Shane Brown has prepared a handout for all of you. It's also available to those that are attending remotely. And then if you want to, in your preliminary budget, the code enforcement, or sorry, excuse me, Public Work starts on E1, if you want to have that as a reference. So Shane.
Good evening. I don't want to go through the presentation. A lot of it is there's some numbers and underneath the numbers and the staffing, I just put some of the duties we have just to give you a snapshot of what the guys do on a daily basis. First one is street maintenance. In 2022, we're budgeted for 4.33 employees. For the public's information, it sounds weird by, you know, half a bodies or quarter bodies or third of bodies. But the way our department is split up is, you know, depending on what you do, you could be a third, a third, and third between water and sewer. But at the end number usually goes out to a round number. So as I said, in 2022, we were budgeted 4.33 employees for street maintenance in the general fund. And 2023, we are budgeted right now for 3.02 bodies. Our minimum staffing we need for that is five, is as was our crew is for black topping. You know, safety thing, we got to have a guy leave to get black top backhoe. That's the number of PC equipment we have to make it run smooth. Some of the high points are we maintain 110 lane miles throughout the city. There's 10 city parking lots. We mill, we replace the structures, we pave coal patch throughout the winter months. We average 75 plus road cuts a year. That's for digging. Other duties in street maintenance, we mow over 75 city property. We do the grass violation, which is a revenue for the city. We do all the tree trimming. We trim, you know, that'll show on another slide. The stump removal, top dirting, offsetting revenues for this budget line. We have CHIPS, Paved New York, Extreme Winter Recovery, State Touring Route, and paved depots. Do you want to go through the budget itself in this department?
Would you rather break them up by each one?
Yeah, I broke the slides up by each one. Some of them I got combined together, but.
So that's E3. Oh, no, it's E4.
Sellers, there underneath the overtime, I have a note to myself here. If we have less guys, it's going to equal more overtime. The man hours still have to be the man hours.
Are you reading off of E4?
E3.
E5 hours on. We did, if you want to go back to administration, I didn't have that in the slide there. But we can, we can certainly go through that if you'd like. In the administration, we have myself, supervisor, an administrative assistant in the office, and our head facility maintenance worker that maintains all city facility falls under administration too. Any questions there on administration? So on to the street maintenance. As I said, the overtime, we did raise it slightly to 20,000. We were at 15,000 at the end of September. And I'm sure it's climbed since there, so we're probably over budget in that line as we speak.
Yeah, there were a lot of water main breaks over that early part of winter this year.
Other things in there, we have specialized equipment, that's to buy a new demo saw for road cuts. Underneath that, we have materials and supplies. It shows $26,000, but today there's under 10,000 left in there. And the 498, the other track expense, that's our DOT drug testing. Just so you're aware of what it is, it's a small amount of money.
The capital construction is basically the street maintenance.
Capital construction, that is our CHIPS revenue. So money in is equals money out.
You're expecting 570,000 this year?
We put down 500 to be saved to 70,000 is what I have left over from last year, which we're actually going to take in manpower this year. So if you look, there's 500,000 up top and in the bottom of the revenue line, there's 570 to offset manpower this year. The next slide has street cleaning. There was 2.83 budgeted for 2022. For 2023, there is 1.33 employees budgeted. For street cleaning, it's a staff of anywhere from two to eight people, depending on if we're out picking up brush or if we're sweeping the street and having a dump truck fall behind, you know, in the springtime to make less trips on the thing. This is one of the areas, if we're going to lose bodies, that I think we need to look at. And I know it's a real nice thing for the public, but it's one of the things that we can control in our department. We can't control snowstorms or water breaks or anything like that. We can control if we pick brush up or not. So in the budget line, I mean, if you want to see the notes for the public, you know, we sweep 110 lane miles, all city parking lots, the parks, the trail. We had the brush grow ramp. We have been the last few years opening the landfill on the weekends on Saturday. If we'd like to maintain that, we're going to need to raise that overtime by 6,000. That's what it takes to run it for 15 weeks. And the guys are at the point, they used to take a lot into their comp time, but they're about maxed out, so now they have to take pay.
And that, is that to allow brush disposal down there?
Yeah, so they open the landfill on Saturday morning from eight to noon, and then citizens can bring it theirself. So we started in May and ended in late September.
Does that save us money because you're not having to pick it up? Like, I take mine.
It does. A lot of people that like their brush picked up on a weekly basis like we used to do, they bring it over. But a lot of the people still like to have it picked up in the spring and the fall. But there is a lot of people that take advantage, that like bag their grass and stuff like that, or contractors that can't get there, or someone cuts a tree down, they use it on the weekend.
So do you think that $6,000 is a saving for manpower?
It would, it probably is, yes. If we're not picking up this much, it would be, yes.
What's the cost of the July brush pickup approximately?
Probably, I would say anywhere between, we do it for about two weeks, so probably between $8,000 and $10,000.
For two weeks of brush pickup in July?
That's what I was looking at. I think it was $4,500 something a week. We just had to do the numbers for Tree City USA. So it's like between $4,000 and $5,000 a week. That's just manpower. That's not equipment, that's not fuel, that's nothing. That's just manpower at the urban rate, including your insurance and all that stuff. Shade trees, we have nobody budgeted to that, but we still have to maintain them. Obviously, I think it was just a thing because it's a small budget that they didn't allocate bodies to a few years ago, they took it out. The basic other stuff is just the materials and supplies, just buying new brooms for it and stuff like that to keep the machine up and going, which we did. You guys did allow me to buy a new one through CHIPS this year, so it should be in soon, I hope. Next, we have snow removal. I can skip the public works garage if you want. Okay, we can do garage as the next in your budget. If you want to skip one page. The garage has a staffing of two, which is split a third, a third, and a third. Maintain and inspect 70 plus pieces of equipment. We also repair all city small engines, and these gentlemen work on the street as needed. And we also work on plant equipment. If we have time, in the fire department, the police department, getting a pitch or code enforcement, we try to help them out with their equipment too. If you look at shop, a lot of it generates revenue back in through the water sewer fund. We did have to raise our gas up, our fuel. The prices have gone through the roof and I think, remember, I think it was in July, we had to reallocate 80 some thousand to get it through the year. In the specialized equipment, we're the 3,000 that pays for our diagnostics equipment subscription each year.
So you think under the equipment maintenance, because it's down, like you only have 120 in there, but it was 130 and then 140 the year before? Is it because you're getting a new street sweeper or some of your equipment's down?
Yeah, so as we get a little bit of newer stuff, we dropped the maintenance line. But I think as of today, I'm pretty sure we're right around 30,000 in that line or between 25,000 and 30,000 left. Problem with reducing a line like this, it's not a problem, but it's the way it's expended out through the water sewer. It's not dollar for dollar in the general fund.
Is that right? I don't understand that.
The allocation from the water sewer fund, these expenses go into it. So if we were to have less expenses in the public works garage, we would be asking the water sewer to reimburse less expenses, and so that 290 would go down.
If you look underneath the local effort required is what comes out of the general fund, I believe, at the very bottom.
Okay, I guess I understand.
On to snow removal. Budgeted for snow removal in 2022 was 3.83 employees. For 2023, it's 2.17. Our winter staffing in '22 is nine on the midnight shift, 13 on the day shift. We have one guy that works evenings at the arena, three days a week, and then two days his day shift at the arena to maintain it and do ice maintenance. What's budgeted for 2023 at this time is we'd have to switch to eight guys on midnight shift, 12 on the day shift, and one at the arena. The way our operations work, we have three plow routes over 110 lane miles. One does the, one plow route of two does the main streets. Another one does the first and second wards, and another one does the third and fourth. We also maintain all parking lots within the city. We do snow removal from 425 plus hydrants, cleaning of downtown from Ford Street to State Street, and State Street to Franklin Street, the sidewalks, the grass area between the road and sidewalks, also cutting the cornerbacks at intersections for visibility. We maintain city-owned properties of 75, the trail, all city parks. Snow violations is a revenue, and plowing for New York State DOT is also a revenue. That revenue, thank Brinkton, anywhere between 60 and 100,000, depending on how severe our year is. I think this year we're upwards of 80,000 right now, if I'm correct. The only line I think I raised in here, as I spoke of before, overtime could be an issue. The last snowstorm I had there before the light-up night parade, it cost us 220 hours of overtime for a day and a half storm. I raised the materials and supplies, salt went up about $9 to $10 a ton this year. So that'll roll over into partially next year.
So that overtime for that storm, was that because you don't have the manpower or?
It was just the way it fell on the weekend.
Okay. Can we get that money back since?
We are, I don't know if we meet the threshold. Me and Andrea and Angela talked about it. There were some different criteria in there, like if you had that record snowfall, stuff like that, that we didn't meet. But first, when it came across, we got the information, we're still looking through it a little bit to see if we can get any of it back. It's worth a shot.
Yeah, for one. Why does this show snow removal as a revenue?
That was because the DOT.
That's the DOT calling for the state, the arterial and State Street.
And you have Fort Propery and Father Martin on here.
Yep, we, we have, I think it's a gentleman's agreement, we lease the Father Martin Field. So that parking lot directly behind it, next to the KFC there along Hasbrook Street. We opened that, maintained that through the winter. Those are some of the areas I think we could talk about if we're going to sustain the 31 employees. We maintain the road down to the Rothouse House in that parking lot in front of the loop there for the 4-2. I don't know if that was an agreement that was made before.
That's actually in the contract, I think.
And we also maintain the rescue squad. I mean, there's several other areas that we do maintain that might be something we look at. Sidewalks. That's where the street lighting. That's minimal amount of materials and supplies in there, and the big bulk of that is paid for streetlights. Public Works sidewalks, we have 1.5 employee budgeted this year and with another 1.5 next year. We did reduce some of the lines there. A small amount, 5,000 each. Just like what everybody else did at the other department, we went in there, we scrubbed everything that we thought we could. We haven't used as much materials or supplies because we've been doing more CHIPS work and in-house work. And then the homeowner program, we did take 5,000 out of that too. It's been roughly right about the 15,000 mark, so I don't think it'll affect anything.
Is that about what was used this year?
Yeah, I think we're at.
Like 97, by the time everything's final, finalled up for the end of the year.
How many sidewalks did you do this year? I mean, was it corners or was it actually people's sidewalks?
Corners, we haven't really done mains, like run the sidewalks, we do maybe one or two a year for people. It's the radiuses and all of our digging, we have to go back through and fix those sidewalks when we dig. We also, in the late near fall, they redid the, took the paver bricks out from the community center and put stamp concrete in there.
Looks nice.
A little slippery, we didn't think it was going to be that slippery, so we're going to, we're going to work on that.
You put three to that?
Yep, three guys for a happy year, so it's 1.5 bodies.
What if it was in, that was in the private sector?
There isn't, there is a private sector, our radiuses.
Yeah, I'm just, yeah.
We wouldn't, we would not get our money worth out of it.
Well, we're up three men, you have them for other things, so you say you don't have manpower. So I mean, it's stretching, whatever way you can stretch, you know?
Yep, I just don't think we would get less done with our CHIPS money. It'd be the same thing as trying to source out paving altogether, not do the prep work ourself. I talked to a gentleman at Barris, I think we pay around $100 a ton right now to have him lay it and bring it. He said it'd be upwards of $200 to $250 a ton for them to do the prep work too. So we'd be cutting what we do probably less than half.
Yeah, okay.
Not that we can't try, I mean, if we can try, I don't know.
It's.
If we get as much done there.
So heat light powers for street lighting?
In.
Are you that on?
Street lighting?
Yeah.
Yes. I do think we get some solar credits towards those two, right Angela, they dispersed through every department.
They dispersed throughout the city.
So is that the cost for electricity for all our streetlights and everything?
Yep, and speaking of street lighting, we did get a proposal from National Grid, just waiting to hear back from them, to convert everything to LEDs. The proposal was very favorable for the city.
It'd be nice to.
It was actually, we'd end up, if it stays the same, we'd end up making money. We just have to pay for it upfront. We'd end up making money by switching over.
Yeah, so these, these costs are associated with the city-owned lights, streetlights. And there are also lights throughout the city that are owned by National Grid. So there's a combination, so this is either ours.
No, the ones that they would fix would be theirs.
Right, I'm just, these costs.
Oh, they cost, yes. No, I think we pay for National Grid lights too. We have to pay for their lighting. Each pole, we pay for the streetlight.
Free electricity.
Yep.
And the upfront cost would be to turn all our lights into LEDs?
We did that study several years ago, like 2016.
I think I have it.
That was the buy off, that was the buy amount, the one that I took yesterday. To convert it was what we just got from.
Yeah.
It was. I think that's what we'd get back, and it was like 20 some thousand maybe. There was a decent revenue for the city to do it, which was kind of shocking.
And that's not far, far long enough to include in this budget?
Probably not. We've got the information, we've gone back and forth. I think we're waiting to see a price I want it to cost at first, it was wheel.
So the price you have now is for their lamps?
Yes.
Yeah, it would be great, Shane, if we could convert all those and reduce that cost by whatever.
Yeah.
I don't know how much of a savings there is, whether it's 10% or 25%, I don't know. The other communities have done it, and I've mentioned it in the past, so I'm glad you're looking into it. Especially those great big downtown ones that are just antiquated and.
Well, the two between the twin ridges, unfortunately, we own those. But we have converted the one in between the ridges, I think those have been converted to LED already. The last, I don't know for sure, but that one is obese. We actually had to rent a lift to get up there, it's 100 some feet. And the cable was broke, so it would come down.
Yeah, and you couldn't go up there. You couldn't pay me enough money.
It's too bad they couldn't somehow be upgraded and replaced, but it's probably a major long-term project and goal, so.
That is it for the, we have shade trees, which I did do a slide on that, but we can go through that. And this is in combination with me and Andrea and Mackenzie, Mackenzie's head of the Tree Commission now. There is some differences, but Mackenzie has applied for a grand of 5,000 that'll offset some of our tree expenses. This will also take care of the Tree City USA, planting the tree and stuff like that.
So essentially, the, this covers some of the work that DPW does associated with tree maintenance, but primarily it provides funding for the city's annual Arbor Day celebration, which includes the purchase of a tree, states, etc. All of those costs would be offset by this, it's a CLO Prism grant, which we also use this year. The Tree Commission very much wants to invest in inoculation of some of the city's large ash trees to prevent them from Emerald Ash Bore infestation. So we have budgeted for that. That, that is a cost, we've reached out to a couple providers to be able, that would do that and got quotes. So we have budgeted $2,500 to do that in this year's budget as well.
How many trees would that inoculate?
I think we budgeted for two or three. Three.
The price has gone down tremendously since we were first introduced to that program. Where are those?
They're, they are around the Dubisky Pool area. Those are some of the city's largest ash trees.
And maybe was there a couple, one in Gru Park?
There is one in Gru Park, but I think the focus of this was around the pool.
Is that the moment the?
I believe so, and I think that one's already had the treatment done to it.
So we're actually inoculating trees for Emerald Ash Bore? And that is supposed to be 100% stopgap?
That is my understanding. You do have to do it repeatedly. It doesn't, it's not like one inoculation lasts forever, but.
Kind of like COVID.
Exactly.
So you get to booster inoculate.
Yeah. It's, it isn't the best solution for sure, but it is really the only solution we have to save select trees in the city.
Well, we cut every other one down, didn't we?
We've, we have cut down a lot of ash trees.
Yeah.
Younger ash trees, especially ash trees that were not in good condition, or those that we thought were possibly infected. The state has also cut down a series of ash trees that were in the New York State right-of-way within the city.
Was that their or our request, or was that?
I think the Tree Commission requested that once along the archero dome, one in the corner was in pretty bad shape.
Right.
So they were nervous that the rest of them could have been infected too.
So we cut the majority of them all down, slash and burn, and we're going to inoculate two or three?
So the two or three that they want to inoculate are substantial size, the other ones, I don't want to say small, but these are, the ones they want to inoculate are probably, you know, three, three feet plus around.
And they might have to be inoculated every year?
I don't know if it's every year.
It's every three years.
I'm just having a little fun with this stuff.
So again, this is the Tree Commission's request, and it has been made, made very clear to them that staff would advocate for this and present it to council, but should it be awarded at a lesser level or not awarded at all, then it would be something that we would have to work with it.
I think when a tree gets to a certain age, it's part of our history, you know?
They are in a very public area in the park adjacent to the pool and the Dubisky Center, so inoculating them is, is a very good idea at this point.
Yeah, it serves a lot of shade in the pool.
We had a nice, beautiful chestnut in front of Amets, and somebody cut that down. I don't know why that happened, but it was a nice one. Probably the only one left in the city.
There's one up after Avian.
Is there?
Five points for Andrew.
Yeah, there might be a couple left, isn't there? Just, just that one.
I just know there's one at the end of my first tree. We moving over to water now?
Yep.
It seems to be thriving, it makes a mess.
Yeah, they actually make them, so they are susceptible to the needs of kind of prosper. So how much, if, if per, per man to add to your budget? Do you know what the cost would be per man?
I have a slide on the back, if you want to jump to that first before we do water and sewer. It's all in the very last page, staffing. In 2009, we had a total of 43.5 employees at DPW as a whole, including their plants. At that time, I'm including Recreation here because we have taken over all their maintenance. They had five employees at Recreation in 2009. I think they went up as far as six or seven after that timeframe. So last year, we had 33 employees with Recreation with one employee. And proposed in this budget is a total of 31 employees with one Recreation employees. With sitting with Angela and reshifting bodies around. If we shift them the way you see here, under the requested personnel, to the general fund is 9.83. To water would be 11.87. To sewer fund would be 11.33. There's an approximate $50,000 savings to the general fund, a cost to the water fund of 18,000, and a cost to the sewer fund 92,000. The issue with this, to be upfront, is at the revenue meeting, we spoke of taking $330,000 out of the water and sewer. My recommendation would be to use a portion of that $330,000 towards DPW salaries. But doing both won't work. In looking in the past, to Mr. Ries's point the other night, when we took that much money out of the water and sewer fund, the city had well over 100 employees. So the money did spread out over more employees at City Hall and other areas that we pay that do those duties, but now they're just not there. So that is my request, and we did the numbers, that's with health insurance and everything. So there is a small savings to the general fund, and the sewer does go up the most because that's where we didn't have the most bodies. But if you look back in 2009, there was actually 15 employees in the sewer fund and 14 and a half in the water. That includes plants and street employees. water. That includes plants and street employees.
Would you mind going over that one more time for me?
They also have.
Oh yeah, and she does have a handout of where, this is what is proposed. This isn't my recommendation. This is what's proposed by the, our first budget here.
So this, this is not what you're talking about?
No, that's what I was talking about right now. Yeah, so. Right now, we would add slightly, we'd add more, but two bodies would end up adding to water and sewer fund. And actually another half of bodies, regardless of the outcome of this, we're adding to the water plant itself because of the filter cleaning. It's about a half a body worth of man-hours a year that four employees from DPW streets go and do. I don't know why we didn't pick up on that sooner, that it should be charged to that line. But we, in our brainstorming with all the department heads, it's one of the ideas we came up with.
But it's pretty much coming out of the, I mean, we can go with sewer fund, water fund, general fund savings, but it's still the same pair of pants. It's just a different pocket holding the money.
Yep.
So, I mean.
It's just a savings to the general fund where less people pay tax on it.
Right.
There's just so many properties, you know, between the Lockwood, the pool, city hall, parks, Dubisky Center. You guys have done a tremendous job. And and every year you've brought back surplus at a point, used it to pay down your debt, your, your, your lease. You cleaned up, I think, all of your lease, which is avenue.
Yep. The only thing we have outstanding is we ordered a dump truck last year. Done a two-year wait period for it. So there is a small amount of money in the water and sewer fund and then we'll have to uncover some money this year to hold it. And then instead of taking out of the general fund, we're going to pay for it partially out of chips from the general fund this year. So it won't have an impact on the general fund.
So we, we have real problems that, with our Lafayette Street Bridge also. And, and there's something, I think a coating that needs to go on top or caulking?
Yeah, we, so they did half of it when they did the arches underneath over land. So they did half of it up top. So there, there is half left to do, which sealed it from still leaking into that bottom half.
And yeah, and that's, that's part we really need to, to work on because that's the most expensive part to, to repair.
Over the river is, yes.
Yes, it's over the water. Could, could giving you back two people and could your department do that work and save us that money and save that bridge?
I, I'm not going to say that would save that bridge.
No, I mean.
It would, it would stop the water from going down in right now. I don't know if it would. I don't think the bridge is in fear of falling down by any means at this point in time. If it was, I think we'd score higher. There's no road restriction on it. It was just the stuff falling off the sides, which the DOT helped us a couple of years ago and we knocked it all off. We haven't got a red flag on it, but I haven't seen the stuff they've sent for the bridge inspection. They haven't got to us yet, so just don't know when.
What is the cost to caulk the rest of the bridge?
I, I'm not sure.
This big, Dave?
It's along the, yeah, it's along the sides and then the joints that go across.
Right.
We could, we could pull up the records, what they charged us to do it two years ago.
Yeah, we can pull that out.
I would think we should work on that so there isn't more of a problem.
Yeah. Cause you know, if, if we can slow down the decay.
Yep.
We obviously don't have money to repair it now, but slow down the decay and it will save us. And if we're going to have to pay someone to do that and your vet crew can.
Actually, yeah, the sidewalk crew actually patched it. The last time it was patched, not the caulk, but you know, in the lanes itself, they cut them out. The company that was here let us know what to use.
Yes, I remember that. That's why I brought it up because I'm thinking two men doing that could save us money. And then it would be available for this other work also.
Is it something we could look at for some work? Yeah?
Return. And, and more on you.
So Angela or Andrea, his request, how does this impact the three funds? And I don't, I guess I don't have my head wrapped around it yet.
Well, so I think, I mean, he's, we just kind of came up with this in the last few days. So this is probably a scenario we'll, we'll run in your proposed budget amendment. It does save the general fund fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, this was a late addition on my part.
And gives you your two men?
Yes.
Well, it's no one's fault. We've just, everybody's always constantly working through it and thinking through it, so.
But what, what you're basically saying is the total of these three things here, which was uh, taken out of, as councils can propose, so they'll take three hundred and thirty thousand or whatever that number was.
Yeah.
And apply it toward reducing taxes. You're saying you want to use part of that to hire more employees?
That was my request.
That way you're, with you, by putting the employees in the water and sewer, you're not taxing the entire tax. You're only taxing water, you're only, your water and sewer.
Yeah, but the purpose of, the purpose of moving more from water and sewer was to reduce the tax liability or generate more revenue for those positions that have already been proposed to be cut, not to create new ones.
Well, these are two positions that are proposed to be cut that I'm asking for.
I know, but you would be taking from the ones that we, that's what we did that for.
Yes, and that's what I.
We were trying to find revenue to.
Keep people.
To keep people.
That are here.
That are proposed to be cut, not to add more people. That's what we're trying to do.
Well, these are two people being cut.
These are on the cutting block.
Well, they're not, they're vacant positions.
They're vacant positions. Well, well, one's not, one's retired and one retired, but with my request is because these are actually people that do that work in the water sewer. I, I don't know how we stretch the water and sewer fund for other departments. I mean, it's taking a pretty big hit. If you look at it down to the people that are being paid for it, I don't know how many other people we can pay for.
So this would take that three hundred and thirty thousand and it would add a hundred and ten thousand back to it? Back, back to that three thirty. So that puts us at only taking two twenty out instead of three thirty.
I think it's more than that.
And on top of it, you get a fifty thousand dollar savings to the budget, to the general.
I think it's something similar to that. Angela, I think, might be able to speak on that. What is that, what does it create towards that three thirty? How much do we lose of the three thirty?
What I was saying out of the three thirty, that looks like it would, it would not, I'm looking at this, this bottom right here. Let those bottom two numbers are a hundred and ten thousand.
Gotcha.
So that puts it at two twenty, but then the fifty thousand dollar savings really kind of keeps it about two seventy. So we're getting two extra guys to do the work and we're still taking two seventy out instead of three thirty. So I'm not really a numbers guy, but all right.
But, but at the same time, you're, you're, you're taking that revenue and you're allocating it. It was revenue that we agreed to move over to the general fund in an effort to keep taxes down.
I know.
And to save the positions that were proposed to be cut.
Which ones in particular?
I was thinking of police myself.
I can kind of speak to a pretty high level summary of this whole, and we go to the personnel page in the budget. When this is put together, there was already somewhat of a reallocation of public works employees. Uh, A dash seven. And this, the biggest thing was this budget in the general fund reduces positions twelve FTEs, let's say. Half of that is coming from the police department. Others is at one in city hall, two in city hall. So there's eight. The rest is an impact of the DPW. So we've taken essentially four positions, four and a half positions out of DPW. Either move them into the water sewer already or we have the two that are just not being filled when they're vacated. So we've already reduced the expense and yet then we go and we say, okay, bring more money into, from the water and sewer into the general fund to eliminate having to use increased tax revenue. I think that three hundred and thirty thousand dollars is extremely aggressive to do. And I, I wouldn't recommend that if this is your personnel. So now with Shane's personnel, we take and we, on his proposal, we put even more employees into the water sewer fund. So to what you were calculating, where that three thirty, that's council position, should at least be reduced by the added costs that are being put into these two water and sewer funds. Bringing that down to two twenty instead of three thirty. So now you have increased that deficit in that general fund budget by a hundred, what is his whole number? It's a hundred thousand dollars. You will offset that with a fifty thousand dollar savings. So we close the gap on that a little bit. But it would not be my recommendation to go that high on an allocation of your water and sewer funds into the general fund.
And is there any?
I agree.
Prohibition or ruling from the comptroller or anybody that would prohibit charging fire department personnel to the water and sewer fund?
I think booties had an issue with that with their credit bad.
No.
I would have to research a concrete answer to that. I don't have an answer to that sitting here.
Cause I'm curious because you know, what you're arguing for is to apply more employees and save money toward. And there may be employees that legitimately could be charged to at least the water in terms of fire protection. And they flush hydrants. So they're somewhat responsible for, you know, the maintenance as, as well as using those facilities to fight fires. So you know, my question is, do we have the employees that were not charging to those funds?
Well, the answer to that might be yes, a minimal amount of their work. Would it be a material amount? That's subjective, but I would say the calculation to do that.
Twenty-five percent of our budget though. So even if you took ten percent, there's two hundred and fifty thousand. I'm sorry, I did that wrong, but you get my point.
Understood, yes. But I would say to you that when we run through and the city does that current allocation that they've been doing all these years, there's probably, if you want to go that method, to do a direct allocation, say fire department works, you know, one tenth of their hours in water. You gotta then look at who you're also putting in there and does code really work a third in water and a third in sewer? So you'd have to pull them back out. So you're going to win some, you're going to lose some. If that's the way we're going to do that. But because right now the current allocation takes most departments within the city and the general fund gets a reimbursement for their services to the water and sewer. So the position that the state has taken with the city three, four years ago at this point is that you're taking too much money. And here we are going back to those numbers and then some with less employees citywide. So it just seems to not be the direction that the city should be going.
I think the requested personnel in that scenario is what we should be doing. And, and he gets his two men. Mike gets Lafayette Street Bridge worked out. And we shuffle some of that money back to water and sewers to keep us from getting in trouble.
But that, that bridge has to be addressed.
Yeah.
Or that caulking work.
I think you got a good point.
I think, you know.
Well, that's, that's a matter of, you know, a contract for five thousand dollars or ten thousand dollars with a private company. They pay for the materials and they come in and they.
I'm going to guess what they did up there was upwards, and I could be wrong, eighty thousand. They did the top of that.
Just for the, I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about repairing.
Caulking.
We'll, we'll pull out, we'll pull out the numbers. So I, I have it written down and get that kind of circled by council on that. The numbers will be a little dated, but at least you'll have actual numbers.
Yeah, we'll, we'll put some real money into that bridge.
Yeah, I think that sounds like a good plan. Gets him his men back and.
So while you say there's a fifty thousand dollar savings in the general fund, you're taking, you want to take a, a portion of the three thirty, like a hundred and ten or more out. So you're really increasing taxes. Or allocating specifically for one department over the other?
Yeah, and I, I see the two topics somewhat unrelated. The one, the adjustment to the allocation from the water sewer fund is doing the right thing. Is just doing the right thing. So whether we were going to go with the city manager's proposed staffing or Shane's proposed staffing, my answer to you on the three thirty would not change. I think it is.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Where, where that money lies. And, and was that a, was that a, you know, I'm not, I'm not overly impressed with opinions from state people. I don't know who wrote that opinion. Was it a bureaucrat? Was it the comptroller's office? I mean, what was the penalty for? What was the rationale for it? I mean, how, please explain.
I, I don't know that, I don't think that anybody here has an answer to who wrote that opinion. But again, I mean, it, it is staff's opinion and Shane did make a very good point that going back to previous year's allocation of, with regard to the transfer from water and sewer funds to a time when we had many more employees that were doing the work in water and sewer and increasing it from there is really not in the city's best interest. Those are the types of decisions that, that while the council can make, they are in opposition to what we have been given guidance from the state on and the position that the city council has taken over the last couple of years.
So who's provided the guidance? I guess I'd like to see that, like, that, that's what I want to know.
Those are recommendations in the two thousand and nineteen Financial Restructuring Board report. I don't have the name of the person who made that recommendation.
That's, I wasn't being flippant. That's what I want to know. So I'll go back and I'll look at that. That's what I want to know.
Uh, yes. So I will even go through it and I'll tell you what page it's on, but that comes from the Financial Restructuring Board recommendation.
And that's one of the few recommendations we haven't implemented, you know? You certainly don't have to implement all of them.
I think we are implementing it.
Yeah, we have been reducing the transfer from water and sewer. The city has been doing that.
Yep.
But it just has to all be accounted for. That's why we got that punch card or that time card system, right? Electronic time card. It'll kind of help with any shady areas.
We've, we have been working to tighten that up so that it was more accurate and there was more backup.
You know, that was also written at a time by the Financial Restructuring Board when we had a bad bond rating. We had three thousand dollars in fund balance. Since then, this is a different time. We've eliminated thirty-plus positions. And, you know, the report hasn't been updated to reflect the fact that the county changed the formula on sales tax and we lost two point five million dollars. So I, I'd, I'd like to hear more guidance from them because it's not current and we need to do something. So.
The loss of revenue has offset all the, you know, the positive.
I know. I agree, Mike.
You know.
I couldn't agree more. We'd be, we'd be fantastic if that hadn't happened. I think it took about three years to. How much of the fund balance should you have in like your water fund? Is it, what, what is her recommendation, I guess? Cause he's looking for one sixty.
So the general guidance is seventeen to twenty percent of fund balance of your budget.
So.
So that sewer fund, fund balance is far in excess of that amount of money.
Okay, cause if, if we took, like, there's, and I know you're not going to like this. I don't like this, but it's another means to get in where you need to get. You transfer to general fund says three eighty-five, four ninety-nine. If that was increased by a hundred and fourteen thousand, taking into consideration the water fund's going to increase by, most likely by four percent. And that twelve and twenty, two thousand and two bond that was redone in two thousand and twelve, that'll be paid off in two, in twenty twenty-three. We won't have to pay that anymore either. So that'll help replenish this fund. It's already pretty large and that'll still leave two million, three hundred and sixty thousand, four zero two.
You're speaking about water fund.
Yeah, yeah, a way to pick up, like, he's looking for one sixty to keep his two people. There's. There's one fourteen, five of it and.
What page are you on? I'm sorry.
I, I skipped ahead only to get the right numbers and it's in, it's actually in the water.
Oh, okay. That's one.
I three.
Okay. I just wasn't following. I just wanted to make sure I was following what you were saying.
If you scoot to the, the, just the total water fund at the bottom and you look at the three eighty-five, four ninety-nine that was transferred to general fund. If it was kicked up to one fourteen, five oh one, it would be, it'd be a half a million dollars, but you still have a fund balance of two million, three sixty. Or oh two. So I, I don't, that's a, that's, that's a way to claw your way to the almost within forty thousand dollars of what you're looking for. And like you said, everybody's paying it. And the water seems to be a little bit fat. Well, it's not as fat as the sewer, but sewer's got a lot more, uh, it's, it's got, it's got, and well, but I mean, this might be an avenue that you might be able to, you know, tweak and, and reach without grabbing into the other. Can we? Sorry, Wilson. Did you hear your answer or not? I just threw it out there. I, people shake their heads kind of and some are amazed.
More fund balance is how you propose it.
Yeah. One fourteen of it. I mean, he's looking one sixty. You're talking to two people. It's puts you within forty thousand dollars on it. And nothing changes. And, and you're going to get your money back because you don't have that bond in twenty twenty-three. So you're not going to pay the interest and you're not going to make that payment, which I think the payment was four hundred.
So this sounds about right.
Four sixty or something.
I was gonna say I would guess three eighty, but.
So that's.
Couple of them in there.
That's going to drop off. Plus you're going to have four percent added on because that's what most likely is going to happen for twenty twenty-three in the water. And so your revenue is going to increase. You just picked up, um, those, that bond plus the interest. So I don't, I don't think it's too much to squeak him out as far as getting pretty close.
And I, I want to be upfront here too. One of the reasons I'm asking for this is I do have two people leaving in twenty-four. Cause I know we're probably going to be in the same boat next year. So I do have a retiree in January twenty-four and one in the mid of the year. So I, I know that it seems like I'm trying to push out, push out, but I do have two more people going. So I'm hoping that maybe things get better through next year, but I don't want to hire someone that also got to tell at the end of the year that they don't have a job. So that's the reason I am at, that's one of the reasons I'm asking. Cause I do have two retirees coming in twenty-four.
I think we gotta look at the.
You'd have a year of training.
But I'm just saying that.
You can't, you can't take more money out for.
A year of training could make a big difference. Why wouldn't they have to?
It's close to. Where are you going to get it? Just you're going to get it. I mean, I'm not done yet. There's still some, there's still some more digging to go here in the next few pages, but they're probably not going to like that either, but. You know, when you, we're running out of pieces of pie here. It is nice that we have somewhat healthy fund balance because, but seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars is a lot on our fund. Well, split between the two. Right?
Uh, the seven fifty out of fund balance, what are you referring to?
I thought we were using seven hundred and fifty thousand out of fund balance, the general fund to balance the budget.
But those are budgeted expenses within the water sewer fund that the rates are, we can talk about that, um, but.
Are you talking about using water?
I'm using, yeah, water.
Oh, you're talking about using water and sewer fund balance, not general fund, fund balance.
Yes.
But we're already.
Three quarters of a million dollars of general fund.
Aren't we using a million in sewer fund balance already?
Different reason though.
Oh.
Yeah. Because that, yeah, if you look there too, and that, where's that line? That's another page.
Yeah.
Are we going to get this updated?
It is a, that is that document that you have in hand.
We discussed this.
Coincide with this budget right here. Those are twenty twenty-three appropriations. That's a futuristic look at your fund balance. That's not from June.
I think it could handle it. I think the other one could handle it too.
Shane, do you want to go back to your presentation and finish your water filtration plant and transmission distribution?
Yeah, we can run through it real quick, then run through the, do you want to do the rates for the water as we do this? You want to wait to save the rates to the end? So I'm sure that's going to be a hot topic.
We, Angela is also prepared to start with the rates, so we can do that. I'm not sure how council prefers.
However, it flows.
Just one second. So this is the current situation with all three funds, but it does not include the seven hundred thousand dollars that we talked about bonding for that wasn't here, I thought.
Seven oh six.
Oh, the seven oh six. Okay, Councilor, I do understand where you're going.
Yeah.
That is correct. Yes.
Did we get that updated?
Yeah, we, you know, it'd be three point three at the bottom of the first column. But we can, yeah, certainly I can adjust.
Cause it's easy to like, look at this and miss seven hundred thousand dollars. So.
We would never lose it. We'd find it again.
No, I know, but we're trying to find it here. You guys are trying to lose it.
We just need a busker.
You're trying to fake it.
So on the water filtration plant and transmission distribution, at the water plant personnel for the budget that's in front of you, there is for twenty-two, we had three employees. For twenty-three, there's three point five. That's where I spoke of earlier about reallocating the half a body for the filter cleaning that they do every other week. And the majority of the guys come out of DPW streets.
Can you, can you just? I apologize, but you know, when you start talking to half people and quarter people and, and you're looking at, you're looking at everything that everybody does in the department. We don't do that with police and fire. So it gets very.
Yep. So we have the sheet here.
Wait, wait, no, I got that. I got that too. Can you just tell me how many people work full-time at the water plant? How many people work full-time at the sewer plant?
Yep.
And how many work at your garage?
There's three at the, the water plant. There's three budgeted for the water plant, three budgeted for the sewer plant. As you know, our water and sewer plants are now cross-trained. So they actually work at both places. So they just go back and forth. So we just split them equally amongst two funds.
Wasn't there supposed to be a savings in the forty million dollar project to reduce? And have we done that? Or are we still operating?
We have reduced, uh, I don't have that number in front of it. We have reduced down two or three bodies since, for, in the last two or three years. There used to be eight at the water and six at the, eight at the sewer and six at the water plant.
Really?
So now we're down to six total.
Okay. Good thinking.
So they're down, they're down quite a bit. And I mean, they run a tight ship there.
So.
And then the upgrades to the sewer plant is helping a lot. There's obviously a lot less manual labor, new equipment. But there's a lot more technology to keep up on.
So you have twenty-five people at the garage. Including mechanics and snow removal and shade trees and everything else.
That's also including myself and administrative staff.
If you look at the sheet, John, it breaks it down. How many people are.
It's, well, this year there's twenty, there's twenty-three.
Water plant, there's six point six nine. So sewer, you have five point six four.
No, so the one across the top, John, sorry, Mr. Reese, there is, where you see water in the very top chart. And that's our transmission and distribution employees that come from this one.
Yes.
Great. So, uh, so the top chart where it says city maintenance worker, it says water. If you come down to the bottom of that, it says six point six nine. That's people that work out of DPW streets, but they work transmission and distribution on the water lines.
Yeah. See, and that's not what I'm wondering. That's not what I, but I, I understand you're allocating people to different things, but it doesn't.
But if you come across, so which budget, there's, there's twenty-three people that work out of the DPW barns, twenty-three employees at the sheds. There's, and then the water and sewer have six together.
And then, so you have two admin?
I have a facility maintenance, head facility maintenance worker, which takes care of all the buildings and grounds in the city. Is in our admin. I have an administrative aide. I have myself and I have a foreman.
So there's more than thirty-one?
There's.
No, there's thirty-one. There's thirty-one.
There's twenty-three, six is twenty-nine, there's thirty-three that were budgeted for twenty-two, thirty-three people budgeted for twenty-two.
Oh, are you asking about twenty-two or twenty-three?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three, there'll be thirty-one total.
This is the breakdown for twenty-three. That aligns with the one area.
That's with losing the two.
If you go down to the second little table where it has the administration, those are the positions you just talked about. Um, that the little blue box has four. That's the number. I'm saying if you're under the third little box, that's the water plant, that's the two, three in each for a total of six.
But my point is there's three at the water plant, three at the sewer. So that leaves twenty-five left. I don't, I don't have a little blue box, but there's, that's twenty-five if I did the math right. Yeah. You just told me there was twenty-three and a, a whole bunch more in administration.
Well, I, I thought you were talking about two thousand and twenty-two.
No.
So in two thousand and twenty-three, there will be twenty-one employees, a director, a foreman, administrative aide and the head facility maintenance worker, which is under administration too. Which maintains all the city buildings.
So you're really saying there's twenty-one and there's four in administration?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I'm getting at. It's hard, it's hard to get there, but I, I'm.
It is. It's, it's very, it's very, there's small parts of bodies that you work in this budget.
So there's three at the water plant, there's three at the sewer plant, full-time. That's all they do.
And help us.
Okay. And then you got twenty-one other people doing everything else. And you got four that are administration, including your foreman who theoretically runs your people and stuff.
My, my foreman and the other person administration, which we talked about today, is, he's basically a worker. He's a head facility maintenance worker. He does all the building, the ground works throughout the city, all the maintenance, all the buildings. I, he just got stuck in that line when he came with back.
Okay. So you really have twenty-two and three in administration.
Sure.
Yes. Okay. Go with that. Yep.
All right. That's all I wanted to understand rather than twenty-five here and twenty-five.
It's tough because they, they're spread across three funds. That's where it's, you look at them along and my eyes go crazy too, trying to figure it out.
It's challenging. It's a lot of work. Work enough. The Kane City too, you know, an older city. The Kane infrastructure.
So some of the duties of the plants, picking back up where I left off, it's all sampling required by the DOH. They do all the water meter maintenance throughout the city. We're in the middle of upgrading our meter heads that we purchased a few years ago because of the sunset through three G. So which will we do? An all-in-house part, a few plant employees and a few DPW street employees are going to tackle that within the next month. Now they take care of the intake at Hyler Station, the regulator building, and they do, uh, building maintenance and grounds. They also help us plow streets when we can't, don't have enough employees. They maintain the sidewalks, across the bridges, the crescent area, all the way back up through.
Shane, can everyone who works at DPW plow?
Everybody that works at, we'll call it, out of the twenty, twenty-one people John were talking about, the plant employees. Not all of them have CDLs. They, they weren't required, but I think two have them and a couple of them are looking into it. I don't know if you know, the state changed the guidelines for CDLs. You have to go to schooling now. You can't just go take a road test and all that anymore. Uh, we did reach out to the DOT. I became an instructor. We're just a CDL class B. We haven't had to cross that bridge with an employee yet. So we'll see how that goes when it happens. So if you have a license for so many years, you could train that license or below. So we do have a couple of employees in-house that have class A's. So we're hoping we can do the training in-house. If not, you have to go away for six or eight weeks.
So you need that order to drive a snowboard?
Yes.
I'm not saying I want to drive a snowboard. I was just trying to understand how many people could do that job.
Yep.
Okay.
Uh, in the transmission distribution, in twenty-two, there was, uh, five point two employees. We upped that to six point two. And then some of their duties are installation of water mains and laterals. They take care of all the water main breaks. They maintain over eighty miles of water mains, uh, four hundred and twenty-five fighters they maintain along with all the valves in the city. Probably a few thousand of those or more. Do we want to go through the budget? I know we talked about the fund balance stuff here a little bit ago. In the admin fund, dollars are there. There's, uh, forty-five hundred dollars in overtime, which pays for on-call pay. Longevity, fully allowance, uh, small travel, the computer expenses. Oh, I'm sorry. I six.
Do, do members of council have questions on the, uh, water budgets? Do you want to go through them line by line?
Capital construction has gone from, what's the sixty-two thousand?
Where are we at? Oh, I eight, Mr. Reese?
Yes.
That is a, the dump truck. Portion of the dump truck. And.
Where's the other portion of it?
Sure. So.
Oh, the other, oh, the, the capital, the other, I thought you meant where the other portion of the dump truck.
I did. I did.
Where the other part of the dump trucks being paid out of?
Yeah.
Sewer fund and we're covering money this year, then I'm paying a portion out of my chips money. It's like a hundred and fifty thousand roughly.
So there's sixty-two out of the sewer fund? Or a dump truck?
No, I think this is actually, it's going to be twenty-five or twenty-six. The other portion of this capital construction of the water fund is to replace hydrants.
Okay. So how much is the dump truck?
I think twenty-six, five.
The total cost of the dump truck?
Around a hundred and fifty, I think.
And the rest of that is just coming out of the sewer fund and out of, uh?
A, a third of it will come from my chips allocation in two thousand and twenty-three.
I didn't know they let you use that for equipment.
Yep.
And how many dump trucks do you have?
Twelve or thirteen possibly.
It's a lot of dump trucks. How old are they?
They range from nineteen ninety to two thousand and twenty.
That's pretty good.
How many are?
They're all pretty goddamn new, aren't they? Nineteen ninety to twenty?
Nineteen ninety?
Well, it's thirty years old. Okay, but how many?
I was born in nineteen eighty-six. Those are some old dump trucks.
How many are that?
No, we, we've had a big turnaround in the last eight years. So we, we are progressing towards newer equipment. This, this truck that we got now will replace a truck with a box finally let loose on us.
How many trucks are plowed? Six?
No, uh,
How many trucks?
Eight, eight or nine, maybe up to ten. Which would, well, some of them have Sanders and plows. So when you're out with six and then depending on the manpower, if we can get behind sanding too.
How many dump trucks does Masina have?
I don't know that. So I can.
How many does Canton have?
I, I don't.
It seems like an awful lot of dump trucks.
It's a lot of cities, a lot of city street though.
Yeah. I know. I'm just, you know, it'd be nice to have a comparison or something.
I will, I will get that information for you. It's just when you're lean as we are and you're looking at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The thing with this hundred and fifty thousand dollars is we already ordered the truck. So this was budgeted not just in twenty-two, but also in twenty-one. So this has been budgeted for two, two years. We're going into the third year, waiting for the truck.
I've already talked to Canton and Masina about, you know, operations and done comparisons and, you know, there's, there's probably some relevant information there that we should be looking at.
There, there could be savings.
I don't think you can compare Canton to Ardennesburg, but certainly you can compare Masina to Ardennesburg.
Yes, you, you can. And they also have, we take care of the recreation. I think we have a staff of six or more in the recreation department.
How about four thousand for travel?
That is to send the, the guys to training to maintain their license in, in the training for, this isn't the power and supply. That is to get the guys their license that they need to, uh, become plant operators.
Do you need that much? Looks like you spent a thousand last year.
Yep. But then there is two employees, I think, to go up to get their two A this year. You, you, we probably can cut it by two thousand if we'd like.
I'd make that motion.
You can burn through four thousand dollars traveling.
Is there any consensus on saving two thousand dollars? You just said it was.
It's not saving. I'm not for me.
Where do they have to, like, how far is this? Like, where do they have to go?
Uh, the last one for the water plant that they found was in Nunkirk, which is down, down past Buffalo, and they were two week long class. So it's, I think, I would, it, it might work. I think we, we, and if it doesn't work, we can pull it from, maybe if there's a little lean in the sewer, we'll just take it from there to make it work, I guess. I don't know. I don't have an exact number of what it'll cost to go there because I don't know where the schooling, it could be as close as. Syracuse, they've had them in Mecena before, I, I just don't know where the schooling is, so they could pop up.
I know you run a, a lean department, I mean, you bring four hundred thousand dollars, you know, in savings, and we buy a a street sweeper this year, and then the year before and the year before, you brought enough money back to pay off all your leases, oh, I know you're, you're very lean, and when there's savings, you put it to good use.
How about equipment maintenance, thirty thousand? Ten thousand spent to date back in two thousand twenty, it was six thousand dollars, and we, we hire mechanics to maintain equipment, so I'm just wondering.
This is a, this is the plant equipment itself within the plant, the pumps and all that stuff.
Okay.
This, so, the, the water supply, pump and power, the best way to look at it is before it goes to the tower, to what makes to the tower, then the transmitter and distribution is what's running through the streets. On that, we're at the, the, the price right there, but we're also waiting on two big components to come in that could be upwards of ten thousand dollars, and this was as of nine, end of September.
Okay.
But if we look down a little farther, I think we're over budgeting a line too.
And the forty-three thousand for consultants, is this dank or is this?
Yes.
So some of Dank's money comes out of water, some comes out of sewer?
Yes, there's, but they have, they have a formula what, the amount of time they spend in each plant, and that breaks down that way.
So in addition to the thirty-one, we also have dank running.
One employee.
Foration, for how many people that were eliminated that we're now paying dank for?
Is there a plant operator?
Yeah, they, they oversight the four A, we don't have four A operator, operator at our sewer plant. So, as we, when we spoke to dank when they did their contract, it would cost us just as much to have them just as a four A operator in our oversight of our sewer, as it would to bring them into the water plant to do some regulations there for us too.
Right, but you, we used to have a.
We used to have a, a crew of six to seven at the water plant. When I look back, and they at the, at the sewer plant, I believe that included the chief operators at both plants.
Right, and so while we're, we don't have those people working at DPW anymore, we are paying someone.
From Development Authority, yes.
To run both of our operations, which.
Yes, the oversight in the.
I forget how much that contract was for, a hundred and hundred and eighty-three thousand?
They are also training our staff to get their own certificates in future practice.
Yeah, they, they help maintain all, so a lot of the training, the, to maintain your license, you have to have so many hours of training over so many years. They have a program that they've set up to maintain theirs, let's say include our employees into. They, they also do our health and safety manuals for us, they, they do a, a lot more than just sewer maintenance.
Yeah, so this is the agreement that the council approved on November fourteenth. Um, and the agreement was provided, so that lays out, uh, all of the services that they're provided, and they broke it out by cost. I thought it was like a hundred and sixty-three and change for twenty twenty-three, I'm just recalling from memory, but.
So that represents two operators, plant operators, that were reduced from DPW, but we're paying someone else for it. Does it represent more employees and more services than that?
Well, it's a lot more than just those two employees.
This is my point, okay.
Right.
Yeah, they bring a lot.
So we're hearing, so we're hearing that we used to have this number of guys, and now we don't. Well, we've got someone else doing more than just those two jobs. Right?
Yeah.
Paying someone a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars a year to run both the plants, train employees, and do whatever other services they provide.
Yes, you're correct.
Okay.
They also do like engineering service that we used to have to hire out, all that stuff they do in house for us now too, but you're correct, yes, they do.
Okay.
We lost employees, but I mean, you can say we gained two back because of the work they do for us.
More than, more than two, right?
I, I figured an average employee is about eighty thousand at DPW, so two employees.
No, I'm not talking about money, because there might be a savings in there, Shane.
Oh, oh, yes, they do more work than two employees, yes.
Yes.
Okay, yes.
So it might, it might have replaced four employees, or five, I don't know.
And we don't have to hire as much out to engineer consultants and stuff for.
Okay. Just to date. These things in perspective is my point.
Hey, hey Shane?
Savings to us, yes, sir.
Uh, go back up to, uh, lines, um, starting with, uh, point four-ten down through four-nine-eight, I know John, uh, Mr. Reese talked to, uh, uh, one of them with travel. But do you, do you see any savings coming out of, uh, of the actual expenditures for twenty twenty-two? Like, like the heat, light, and power, you got a hundred and five that was budgeted, you're at about fifty-five now. Kind of curious to know whether or not you'll expend all of that, um, money, you've got some differences there at, at the close of, you know, come October first. And I'm curious to know whether or not any of that would, would, you know, if you're seeing any savings there possibly along the, along the lines.
I'm just gonna go off the actual expenditures, there might be a small savings, we just came into the winter season, so they did turn the heat on. So I think that's gonna eat a lot of it up, I believe it's electric heat in that building. So, and there're small heaters spread out through the area, which needs part of the capital project that we don't wanna talk about, because it's, it's one of those things we don't wanna hear, but it, it's one of the things that needs to be upgraded there. Uh, I, I do, I'm looking at, one of the things I am looking at, which I'm always hesitant, is the water testing.
Yeah.
They, they, they've thrown new samples at us that we have to take by regulation. So that's why we, we did increase it last year, and I don't know if they've all been taken yet, I, I can look, talk with Mr. LaRocque and see if that might be a possible small savings, I, I wouldn't recommend anything more than, you know, three thousand dollars in that, but it's a small savings. You know, we, we cut those two, I guess we come up with five thousand, but it's in the water fund too.
What about four-nine-eight, other contractual expenses?
There, that is what we pay our Badger meter bills out of. So for them, the, the seller and stuff to send the signals, so we don't have manpowers going around reading them, that's what that line's for.
Okay. You're, you, but you're budgeting six, oh, seven, we'll say seven thousand for the next camp, for the next year.
Yep, it's a little, that's where I think we're over budgeting that line, that might be one of the lines we had to replace the, uh, meter heads out of, so that one's up, it, it's, it's one of the ones I talked about, really, that's kind of high that we had permission to buy earlier in the year, that wasn't budgeted for.
So the thirty thousand for equipment maintenance, you said something about parts or whatever, and then over on I-ten, capital equipment, there's another two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yep, so capital equipment in here is, that's the vector truck, that, so now we're switching from the plant itself to street maintenance.
Yeah.
And that's one we talked about, we're still looking at a possible grant for it.
So a, a backer truck costs two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars?
No, it costs nearly five hundred thousand. We had it split a third, a third, and a third, and then in our, our session of talking back and forth, it's really just the water and sewer function, so there's no need to put the bearing on the general fund for that PC equip. It really doesn't do a general fund function, so we most, well, those two funds to bear the total cost.
Where's the other two hundred and?
It's in, it's in, would be in sewer in the, uh, sewer line, um.
But when we're talking about increasing people's sewer bills and, and water bills, I mean, you know, maybe we ought to be looking at a grant for a backer truck and a dump truck, I mean, I, I don't wanna raise people's rates to buy this kinds of expensive equipment, if we have it, if it's, if it's usable, if it's decent, you know, we just bought us a brand-new street sweeper.
Well, we, the street sweeper came strictly out of chips money, so there was no bearing on the citizens to that PC equip.
You're gonna have to maintain it.
We will have to maintain it, yes. But it's a lot less expense to maintain that than the one we have right now.
Do you see what I'm saying, though?
I know, I, I agree with you, but the, the vector truck is the single-handedly most important piece of equipment we own. If that goes down, we're dead in the water, if we have any issues with water and sewer. It, it, it digs around gas lines, you know, it, it excavates all that out for us, it runs all of our pro-.
I've seen it being used, I know, but what, what year is that?
Two thousand thirteen, maybe.
What's the life expectancy of one of those?
Most people trade them in every five to six years to get your value out of them, we're past that now. I think they offer us a trade-in of a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Then if it's a critical piece of equipment, I mean, you got thirteen dump trucks, you even need a fourteenth one?
Well, when I get the new dump truck, one will be going to the auction. That, that's, yeah, it will replace the dump truck, the probably the nineteen ninety or ninety-three, it will probably replace that.
But the vector truck, I mean, I've read about other communities doing leases on bigger pieces of equipment, have we looked into that, is there any rationale for doing that, is there any savings, is it a scam, should we not do it?
I know when we entered into the lease program for the smaller vehicles that we have, they didn't offer anything of that size, and maybe there's something else out there that we can look into.
Yeah, I, I just read somewhere.
Savings, or even if it's close to the same cost, if we divide out, you know, if we think it only lasts six, seven years to, before we wanna trade it in, if it equals out the same, why wouldn't we upgrade sooner, right? Makes sense.
Yeah, I just think it's a, it's a, it's an awful big-ticket item, and, you know, we're, we're trying to
I'm not sure.
Reduce taxes, we're trying not to cut positions. We're trying to maintain fund balance, we're going in all different kinds of directions.
If you would like us to take it out for this year, we can.
Well.
I, I mean, if you, I, I, I mean, that's your guys' decision, it, I mean, can, I'm gonna sit here and tell you we can't get through another year, yeah, we can't get through another year.
I don't know if the council has the, uh, hopes to do that or not, would you guys wanna go back and amend these and take a look at these things, or is this still your recommendation?
If council doesn't want the city to purchase the vector truck, I mean, obviously, we can take it out.
Well, you might wanna look at a lease or something, I don't know.
Well, we can look at that, uh, we certainly can, and we might be able to come up with a, an answer between now and December twentieth, I don't, I don't know that as a, as truth, I mean, as Shane indicated, we are looking at a grant for this, um, I don't know that, I mean, I don't think it'll be a hundred percent.
Well, I think we should defray until we, until we've written a grant, or we understand whether it's cheaper to buy, to lease these things. So I, I, I would take both of them out, that'd be my recommendation, I, I doubt we have the votes.
For the boat, the, are you talking of the dump truck and the factor?
Decisions. Dump trucks already.
The dump truck's on order, we can't, we can't take the dump.
Said that about thirty-two times tonight.
It was ordered in twenty twenty-one, so I.
We might be able to take it out.
It might be asked a lot of times, but at least he's asking questions to try to figure out how to do it, spending the time on it. So at least respect that.
Yeah, two years of budgets in there, so is that.
If it's, if it's, if it was ordered, why is it in the shared budget?
One, one year's, one year's accumulated. One year, one year didn't get accumulated, because we just didn't think of it amongst everything, so that one went back to the general fund. So we have this year's accumulated. So that'll stay there, so.
The one-year pay.
So then we're taking it out of water and sewer, which, what we're talking about now, and the other one, instead of taking out a general fund, we're taking it from chips money. So if you, like, you asked earlier, we can purchase a PC equipment through chips if it has a ten-year life expen- expectancy.
I don't think all of them have a ten-year life expectancy.
Yes, a lot of them do, but like, if you try to buy a piece of used equipment or something, they don't allow you to.
Ordered and it was budgeted two years ago, why isn't it in this year's budget?
Like, I tried to get them to pay for demo soft lights this year, and they didn't want to.
Yeah, it hasn't, we haven't received it yet.
Supply chain.
But it was budgeted and approved for an expenditure two years ago?
Yes.
And, and, and you wanna budget it again and pay for it again, is this what I'm being told?
Paying over three years.
So we budgeted half of it the first year. And then we were gonna do financing, so when we ordered it, the money didn't get encumbered, so we had to re-budget it this year, which is half of it. So we already have that money sitting there.
This year, meaning twenty twenty-two?
Yes, twenty twenty-two. So then we're asking for to put it back in the water and sewer in twenty twenty-three, and then the general fund will come from chips.
Even though it was already budgeted and
In twenty twenty-one.
And previous budgets, we're, we're budgeting for the third year in a row?
They, they put it back in the general fund when they didn't receive the truck, it was back order, they, they put it back in the general fund, so the money's not gone. Then this year, they'll have, so you'll have half paid for.
And we're asking for the, the other half.
The other half.
To pay for.
You're gonna have a truck for.
And now the half that we're asking for is split between water and sewer and none in the general fund.
And, and, and you're getting money in general.
Yeah, the third, yeah, third, a third, and a third. But if you would like us to remove the vector truck, we, we can, and we can revisit it and look for more grants if you.
Do you think that's a good idea, Shane?
I, I, I'm gonna, we'll make it another year with it, yes, so, I, I think it's a good idea, we just talked about grants, I think Andrew has applied for one, but we haven't heard an answer.
You gotta wait, so there, there's your directive, giving you a recommendation to take the vector truck out for.
If you're gonna ask me, equipment or manpower, I'm gonna say equipment every, or manpower every day.
I'm looking at you for support, and you're indicating it.
Yeah, no, I'm, like, if Shane recommends removing the vector truck, I think five hundred thousand dollars could go a long way in other areas, so I'm fine with that.
Yeah, and like I said, we can visit.
Favor of, and I'm in favor of, we need two more.
I didn't know if you were looking at.
What, what was it, what was the savings?
Well, I was probably trying to get Dan's attention down there.
What was the savings?
It's two hundred and twenty-five to the water fund, and it'd be two hundred and twenty-five thousand to the sewer fund savings.
I, I would, I would do that too.
Yeah.
Only, only because you'd say you can go one more year.
Yep.
And I, and I, and I.
There's no chips.
And I respect it for saying.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll, no, look for grants, if we can get them, we'll come back next year and say, you know, we struck out with the grants, and we'd like to put it back in.
Or, 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 you know, propose alternatives, or?
We'll look for leasing of them and stuff like that, yep.
Or, yeah, sounds good.
Good.
Okay, there's, there's four for that, if you can make those changes.
What do you anticipate, like, the, um, maintenance, is there anything presently, like, majorly wrong, we're looking at our present vector truck?
No, we just got it back from the shop in the middle of the night, last night, it did overheat in the way back, but the alternator was bad, so they replaced that today, so, no. There's no, no major issues, it's just, the last time we didn't replace it, I think it would end up being twenty-some years old, and it was, it just within a five-year period, they had to rebuild it, then we ended up turning around and buying one shortly after.
You maintain it in?
In-house.
In-house.
Yep, the reason it went away was, uh, still had warranty.
On purpose.
That, that was an oversight that never came through.
Okay. Yeah.
And if something, I mean, we have had to place, replace the pump on it, I think two or three years ago, I think it was like a twenty thousand dollar expense, but we should be able to absorb that within our budget.
I remember when we got it.
Yeah, I think it was two thousand twelve or two thousand fourteen, maybe somewhere there.
Remember, it was stainless steel or something, was it?
I think, uh, I don't know if the boxes are, the, the body.
On page I fourteen, Angela, the three hundred and eighty-five thousand being transferred to the general fund? Is that what you started with?
I think that's what Mr. Fisher was talking about, raising up to half a million, I thought he was speaking of.
But we, okay, but we've already raised it, uh, we already approved a raise of three hundred and thirty thousand, I forget the allocation from each one.
I don't believe we spoke about an allocation from each one, so the only adjustment really that we've kind of introduced is adding the three thirty to the general fund and revenue, but the numbers that you're seeing here, the three eighty-five, that is the original amount that makes up the seven seventy, or whatever that transfer was into the general fund, so if you do the three thirty, you have to decide.
Now, back in two thousand twenty, it was five hundred and forty thousand. Now I'm on I one. This is the question you asked me at the previous budget meeting, where I was getting my numbers from. And you were saying that, uh?
Oh, I understand, um.
And my point was that, you know, this was, this we've decreased way too much, I think, and you know, that's a hundred and fifty-five thousand, you were saying it was a lot smaller than that, it was only sixty-five or seventy-five, and this says otherwise, and that's true of the sewer fund revenues as well. Which I can't find readily, but, uh.
J, J one, I see where you're saying a million, um. The number that I have in the general fund numbers, so I believe agreed to the audit report of those respective years, the trouble that we have looking at the history of these funds is that this transfer was always buried in many different expense accounts within the water. in many different expense accounts within the water sewer. So it was never pulled out of, and put on the appropriate line from an accounting perspective. It was put into consulting or equipment maintenance. So the general fund transfers and the water sewer fund were always buried. That's why there's an asterisk there, because it was a recalculation of what I think was kind of put somewhere else, so. I can revisit that, that number. Um, but I do know that what is sitting in the general fund on inter-fund transfers, because the water fund could have also transferred to another fund that year. Um, whether they do or not, have to look at the financial statements, but, um, the general fund numbers in the revenue line are what have, what was received from the water and sewer fund.
And out of the three thirty, we didn't say how much for water and sewer?
He didn't break it down?
No.
Well, that's we have staff. You guys want to take a break before we get into sewer fund? Take a five-minute break?
I'm fine.
Just soon roll.
Yeah, I got kids to get home to bed.
Okay, J one, um, the two big numbers are capital outlay and other contractual expenses. I'm just looking to understand that better. Not to mention the one up on sewer maintenance for two point six million. And the debt service, I guess they give.
It's a two point six, it's just that to replace the pump station? Well, that'd be one point eight.
On page J eight, um, the sewer maintenance, you have two point one million dollars in your capital section. The vector truck is in there, and also there's the main piece of that is one point eight million for the pump station, of which there's a million dollar grant to offset that one point eight million.
Okay, and the two eighty-six is already taken out?
We just.
Right, okay. Okay. And Andrea, nice job on the million for the main street pump station. That's great. I glad Steve Fisher and I bought for that. And, um, I'd like to see us find grant money to do the rest of it.
We have.
Because, because I know that there are oodles and oodles of federal monies that were just approved for this type of work. And I think we ought to try to, but I guess you have.
Well, so there, we do have two grants pending, one with New York State, um, through the CFA process and one that we just submitted to St. Lawrence County for use of their ARPA infrastructure funds. Those are the two grants that I'm aware of that would be available to the city right now. Uh, and that, you know, align with the schedule that we're working on.
What were the dollar amounts of those?
Uh, it was four hundred thousand for St. Lawrence County. We applied for four hundred thousand to, to the infrastructure program and I think we applied for seven hundred, seven hundred or seven hundred and twenty thousand through the, um, CFA process.
So shouldn't those be budgeted as? You know, potential revenue and not an expense? Because we've made those applications and we're hoping to get those funded. Therefore, we don't have to spend that eight hundred thousand, and we don't have to budget for that expense.
We had to commit to the eight hundred thousand dollar match in order to get the one million dollar from.
Right, but it can come from the two grants that you bring.
If, if you get them.
Well, I mean, we only, we have it for a finite period of time, so.
So you're not optimistic we're gonna get either one, or?
No, I, I am optimistic that, I'm, I'm hopeful that the county will see value in our application and the project and that the city has committed, um, committed to match that as well as the funding provided by NBRC. Um, I'm less optimistic about the New York State grant. We've applied three. This is the third consecutive year that we've put in the same application for that project. The change now is that we have a commitment of funding from a federal agency, so I mean, our, our application is as good as it's ever going to be. But, um, but that's not how we have ever budgeted for these. I mean, those are, those are requests. Um, but there is no guarantee that those would be funded, so that would not be a prudent budgeting technique.
But count your chickens before they hatch. It's like, if we get the grants, then that money will just go back into the general fund and then it can be used, you can't use it, so you've got it, it's where you have it. You're getting on the voodoo economic material with dollars.
Really?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm a little more experienced at it than you are. I'm a little bit more experienced at it than you are. Grant writing and budgeting governmental stuff, you may run it.
I don't see it.
Let's just stay focused. And the thing is, if there's any questions, a good question.
Well, I'm not gonna have, I'm tired of the make-believe numbers, you know?
If there aren't additional questions on the sewer budgets, we can move into the water and sewer rates. I know that was a big topic that council wants to get into.
You guys have any other questions for me?
No, thank, thank you, Shane. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, so the easiest one to probably talk about first are the water rates, which are projected to be increased four percent. Twenty twenty-two's budget left the water rates flat, and in twenty twenty-one, there was an increase to water rates. The water has a fund balance of approximately two point five million. This particular budget calls for a ninety-eight thousand dollar use of that fund balance before we adjust for the vector truck, so that's gonna go the other way. Um, this water fund will need to do a capital project, a sizable capital project in the very near future. So while two point five sitting here today, if we're just running general operations through that, is a healthy fund balance. There's one thing I would recommend out of the water fund, and you take a portion of that fund balance and you set up a capital reserve. Um, I don't think you could never get a capital reserve big enough to overcome a large part of that investment project, but it's definitely something. So the four percent increase, um, would be to keep that fund healthy and to recognize the fact that we have nine percent inflation. We have contracts in the city that are raising the cost of having employees. So to leave that fund stagnant with an impending capital project is not a recommendation from the staff. The staff would recommend that we have an increase of four percent on that. So the allocation of fund balance in the twenty twenty-three budget should go away on that one. But I would argue the savings isn't really enough to worry about adjusting the rates on. Any questions in water? Okay, flipping ahead to sewer. In twenty twenty-one, early twenty twenty-one, we did a ten-year model of what the sewer rates would look like, um, with the new debt that has come into that, um, fund. No matter what way you did it, in ten years, those sewer rates are all projected to be, you know, lots of changes along projection um, in excess of six hundred dollars a year. So we're far from that right now, um, and there were three options to put on the table, to just adjust the rates yearly to balance the budget. Adjust the rates, use some fund balance each year, or to use the fund balance to keep the rate constant. So option three should be off the table because we would only be able to get a year, two year and a half, two years down the road. So the thought of using the fund balance in that one for this purpose isn't, uh, something I would entertain. The sewer fund fund balance rate now, um, is about two point nine million. Uh, this budget calls for an appropriation of that fund balance of one point three million. That is made up of, one way to look at that is the eight hundred thousand dollars for the pump station, two hundred thousand dollars for a non-optional long-term control plan, and then two twenty-five for the vector truck. So taking the vector truck out of the sewer fund would not impact the proposed rate increase of twenty-five percent. Taking the eight hundred thousand dollars out for the pump station would not impact the rate, proposed rate increase on that one either. So, um, what this budget does is.
But it does save a half a million dollars.
Of your fund balance.
It does save a half a million dollars. You're not spending a half a million dollars.
Correct.
Okay.
But a half.
Trying to clarify.
Two twenty-five, you're not spending on the vector truck, out of the sewer fund, which is what we're talking about. And when you combine that with the water fund, yes, you would get a half a million dollars. Um, so what this budget does is it, and it hopes to do is to say, okay, for the payers of the sewer fund, one time, increase that twenty-five percent. But I would tell you, based on a ten-year model, that the council would need to commit, and this is gonna go over two more councils for the next ten years, a modest increase to those sewer rates. So I would say to you that the twenty-five percent isn't the end of it. You know, that's, that's the start, that's ripping the Band-Aid off and realizing that we have a bond payment in excess of a million or two. Um, and then from there on, we are going to have increase of costs every single year in these funds.
So basically, it, it, this, this says, this is a twenty-five percent increase, and even if it's followed up for the next nine or ten years at three percent, that total would be fifty-five percent more to the rate there.
At the ten, in that mark, correct.
And we're still get twenty years to pay.
Yes.
And the infrastructure of cities for.
So.
There's, like, it's just the way it just keeps, there's no stopping. So, I mean, I, I don't, I don't know if you're, I don't think the rate pairs can take twenty-five percent in a, in a sewer, four percent, twelve percent in property tax, full assessment. There's won't be anybody left.
So the council has had so far, um, directed staff to reduce the tax rate to, to within the tax cap, to, to two percent. Uh, which is, we did update that, um, ta- constitutional tax limit worksheet and that, and give that to you so that you could see, see that.
But it potentially could still be there. I mean, we have a public hearing and coming up on a, on a two percent cap, right? So you, nobody really knows which direction it's going, and right now, and this thing says twelve percent. So.
Right.
For out there for the people, it's twelve, four, twenty-five. I mean, you, I don't care which way you slice it. This, this, this is, your, your people aren't gonna be able to live here.
Yeah, we're already, we lose people.
You're, you're, you're just.
Every census.
Burning the last of them.
I mean. You know, this is the point I was trying to make when I ran for office. I mean, I mean, we're the highest tax community in the North Country, and, and people wanna, don't wanna live here for whatever reason. I mean, they're, look at that people. And, um, you know, there's better opportunities, so you have to reflect on the tax rate and the sewer rate and the water rate at some point in time. And, um, otherwise, your community is just gonna continue to decline and people aren't gonna wanna live here, and, uh. So, and I understand the challenges of the budget and everything, but we, we still need to be reasonable. Well, I guess I don't understand the, the ramification of probably a one percent rate. How much is that? If it's ten percent, how much is that?
Four percent's a hundred and eighteen thousand, one hundred and four. Eight percent's two thirty-six, two oh eight. Twelve percent would be three fifty-four, three one two. As an increase, um, which would put, and each one of the, each, one of those, each one of those percentages would bring it up from twenty-nine, twenty-nine fifty-two, six oh three to three zero seven, zero seven zero seven, at four percent for the money taken in. So.
Well, thanks for doing the math and.
Well, I mean, it's, it's, it's really simple. It's simple math when you're looking at.
I don't.
Twenty-nine fifty-two, and you're gonna, you basically take a quarter of it and then multiply it times with four percent, your, your, or your twenty-nine fifty-two from last year. Multiply it whatever percent you want to increase it, and it's, I mean, it's not gonna lie.
Could we get a sheet to confirm that? And, and, you know, I, you know, to do it, I mean, it's a spreadsheet, you can, I mean, it's just numbers, it's not that hard to work. One through twenty-five, what's one percent, what's ten percent? I mean, do it by five.
No, we're not gonna go one percent.
Wait, twenty-five, twenty, twenty, twenty-five percent's gonna bring in seven hundred thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty. So twelve point five percent's gonna bring in roughly around three hundred and fifty-four, maybe three hundred sixty thousand dollars. I mean.
Five percent?
No, five, I didn't do five, I, I kept it in.
You say four, what'd you say?
I said twelve, your, your twenty-five percent rep- represents seven hundred thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty.
I was just looking at it.
And. On top of the twenty-nine, two million nine hundred fifty-two, six oh three, that was budgeted last year. So for a total would be in, in that fund, not counting, not counting the add-on from the transfer of a million and, um, I mean, the state aid of a million and the transfer of twelve sixty-three. So your total balance will come up to five million nine hundred and fifty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight.
So could we get those numbers?
I don't know, that's, that's the thing, is in, in order to do this correctly, these guy, everybody's gotta be able to see those numbers and. And understand that you need about six hundred thousand, I think. In a perfect world, to move forward, but you're not gonna get it, the highest you're gonna get is, I mean.
So we can't make that decision without that sheet and, and understanding it. So if we could, if we could have that for our next meeting, that'd be great.
So looking at a five percent rate, a ten percent rate.
I mean, that's fine, I, I.
I don't.
I'll do it the rest of the way, even though. No, but, I mean, tell that to the.
I'd rather see.
Tell that to those people out there.
September twenty-fourth.
Well, it's gonna go over time. It's never, not going to increase. No, every year, you're looking at at least three percent.
And not, and not spending the money on the vector truck does leave that into the fund balance.
Yes.
Along with, yeah, so I mean, that, that helps, yeah. If we could get those, if we could get those numbers and their impact on the fund balance. What, how it would impact the fund balance at each of those percentages, that would be really helpful for the council to understand and decide. And I've seen it twenty times, I know, I know I have it somewhere.
You need to remember on that, at the timeframe that was done, it was February twenty twenty-one. So I believe since that date, uh, there has been some significant users that have been on health records.
That's right. I think that's why it was updated, yeah. Yeah, those were like a hundred and seventy-five, how much were those accounts? I mean, it was, I mean.
When I put the budget together, I reviewed, uh, the history of each of those accounts and I, I did an analysis because I, I don't believe we have a twelve-month cycle on those accounts any longer. You know, just because of the timing, they fell out of the city's revenue source or were reduced in the revenue source. So there is a bit of an educated guess in the calculation of revenue, um, based on not having those for a full year in twenty twenty-three.
That bond falls off, which month does it fall off in twenty twenty-three? Do you know?
I do not know.
Just curious, because it was like March, you know, or February, still four hundred. I mean, the payment's still gotta be made.
It does, um. So, I mean, in this particular scenario, um, back in twenty twenty-one, scenario one, we were looking at a forty percent increase to balance that budget. You know, so the tail isn't as grim now, um, but it's still.
the tail isn't as grim now, um, but it still calls for relatively a, an increase every single year for the next ten years. And again, your rate pairs have changed since that point in time, um, keeping the fund balance, not doing a capital reserve called for sixteen percent increase one year, thirteen percent increase the next year. So that's an overall thirty percent increase. So what we did uh, would be almost two years ago now, really, the story not changing. I mean, the numbers are different, sure, but they're not materially different, I would say.
Could that sheet also show the existing rate and what the increase would be in each one of those five percent things?
It did, yeah.
No, the, the one you're going to prepare for us.
Yes. Projected rates, right?
We want to see it illustrated at.
With a dollar.
Yeah, it would be the same as this. So all this included the projected rate increases, the rate to the payers as well. We can do that.
So that concludes sewer. Does anybody want to do anything else or?
I, I'd like to say I appreciate you. Staff has done, maybe like we keep asking you to rework this and rework that. Spend a lot on you with your other work and, and you come through for us. Thank you.
Well, they get paid, they get paid for it too.
No, no, and nothing's, nothing's, you know, there's no point. I mean, it's, I think it's, I think this should work.
If you do want to start discussions on recreation, that starts on G one.
What's your rest of our session? We used my glass.
So we have another budget work session following the council meeting on December fifth to kind of go through, so.
We might as well.
It would be great to get through recreation, to get council's feedback online because you will be presented with an amended budget at the December fifth meeting. Right now, your adopted preliminary budget is in conflict, although I know we now have at least called for a public hearing on overriding the tax cap. But the, but there is not a consensus of council, at least there hasn't been thus far, to increase the tax rate to that extent. So if it is council's continued desire to stay within the tax cap or below the tax cap, we really do need to adopt uh, a, a version of the preliminary budget that is in keeping with the basic revenues that the council um, has established. Uh, and it also would correct for the overtime in the, in the fire department that was incorrect, is incorrect in the adopted preliminary budget. It would not by any, by any stretch be the final budget and we would continue to work on it. Um, so at this point, really, the only budgets that the council hasn't talked about at the city level is recreation. Um, we will have a work session following the meeting on the fifth. And then you'll have outside agencies on the seventh and your regular council meeting follows on the twelfth. So from the twelfth to the nineteenth, I believe, because councillor Powers um, has, has a commitment on the twentieth, so.
Yeah, I mean, Mackenzie's here. We might as well just to go through it. We're all here.
That's probably quick.
I know she had to invest about practice early because I have to pick up my daughter early, so.
Um, I, I, I would certainly hope that we could find the money to keep the pool operating. I really don't have a lot of questions on this. I would like to understand the capital cost of what you've talked, mentioned to me about the pool.
So.
And how urgent that is.
Right. So the pool is, um, well, let's just get to the pool. So.
We're gonna, so we are going to go over parks and.
So the pool starts on G eight. And um, so you'll see one of the main things we've done in. This there is out the pool, but what you don't see here, I guess, is what the pool, the pool actually should cost. So we should have probably given you those, but it's about forty five thousand dollars um, in costs for lifeguards. And the previous budget, um, I think we were at something like a hundred and eleven thousand for G nine. Um, and if anybody had their budget from November first, it would have been reflected in, in those. So um, it breaks down to about, to two thousand five hundred and sixty dollars a day to operate the pool at the cost that we project for twenty twenty three. Um, that's with the pool opening the week of June seventeenth, twenty second and being available for, for school field trips and being open to the public July one through August twentieth, five days a week, ten days, uh, ten weeks, so that's fifty days. Um.
So it's not.
In twenty twenty two, we did not open the baby pool. We would not be able to open the baby pool in twenty twenty three. That pool has significant leaks that the city has not been able to address. Um, we also have leaks in the main pool, not significant enough that we weren't able to open it this year, but we, we don't have a capital project planned there to be able to fund the necessary repairs. We also had to delay opening and not open in twenty twenty two because of emergency repairs that were needed to, to pumps. Uh, and again, we, those, in, in reviewing the costs when we were trying to keep all of these things open and overcome the three point six million dollar deficit, those are the things that we pulled out first. Um, so when we were doing the budget and looking at staff reductions, it seemed like when we can't even adequately budget for the maintenance at the facility and the lifeguards alone are fifty thousand dollars, that this seems like the best place. It's not ideal. I don't think anybody likes the idea of not opening the pool. But when it comes down to it, I mean, it's a pretty expensive amenity to have for fifty days out of the year.
Well, the beach wasn't a bad idea.
I don't think that anybody here has suggested that, councillor. But we did not get approval, so we are working with what we have.
We told that we could get approval, though, that we've come a long way, but it's not in the budget.
No.
Because you're not optimistic we can get approval.
I have not included the beach or the pool in this particular budget.
So what's the bottom line? How much?
How much, how much, how much does it cost?
To open it, what's, what would be repairs or, and the lifeguards are fifty thousand. How much more than the lifeguard, she needs?
Hundred, hundred, twenty.
Fifteen?
So, no, so the cost for the lifeguards is, is.
Fifty one thousand?
Well, I just said fifty. I think it's, it's forty and change, so. And then the actual pool line is a hundred and fifteen.
That doesn't cover any.
Repair.
Structural repairs or the, the small leaks that are in the large pool itself. Uh, Mackenzie's tried to run several people down. They've promised to come and give us a thorough, you know, assessment of the pool. It's, it's just been a struggle. I'm assuming there's a lot of communities out there that we see that are having issues with the pools right now. Uh, not to say that it can't make it another year, but I think for the last ten years, people have said that. And now the pump room itself is starting to deteriorate. There's several pumps that we had in, I think, in that budget. I can't remember the line that are critical that haven't been replaced as a thing. Was built, I mean, you know, there's all the testing of the chemicals and stuff like that, the injectors that need to be replaced. They're not large ticket items, but I think it equated around twenty thousand dollars that we needed for that portion of it. Uh, the baby pool, like she said, wasn't open. The leak was so bad that we couldn't, but it's getting time, either hire it out at a cost that we can't afford now, or, or try to find the time in house to do it, which is tough because it comes along with it, the same time that we do our major construction, when that stuff has to be tore apart.
But neither one of us would recommend the beach.
I think the beach is a great idea. It's, it's just where do we have the beach?
Right. So in the initial budget that was presented on November first, you'll see that there was fifty thousand dollars in the contracted services line. And that was to look at um, engineering and design services associated with a splash pad, which does not require lifeguards and has a longer season and has less maintenance than a pool. As well as a feasibility study to look at where the best location in the city is for a beach. Um, again, those costs were removed in the, in the preliminary budget that has been adopted before you.
Okay.
That's why you have to maintain and replace equipment. It's, is it what the end?
So. Exclusive of uh, the capital costs that Shane has mentioned, let's say we kept the baby pool closed and we got through another year, what would you budget to open the pool? Don't break it down, just the total dollar.
One sixty six.
The budget was one fifteen.
One fifteen.
And that did not include lifeguards, or that doesn't.
That, that, the budget for the pool, uh, that does include.
It does.
Was one fifteen.
So a hundred and fifteen thousand is the short answer. That's all I wanted to.
And about twenty thousand and just.
Then you don't, you don't want to set up a, a fund to try and get people from Lisbon and Aspragachi, people with money to save our pool and donate toward it?
I will say that even that did have a revenue, so it was not opening the pool at no charge. We had a revenue in there of ten thousand dollars. So I, I really also would urge council that if you are considering reinstating the pool, that you have to also consider establishing a fee.
Oh, okay.
Which comes nowhere near offsetting your costs, but i- it's just to the point where.
I'm fine with that. I mean, what do you pay when you go to Lisbon? What do they pay, three, four, five dollars? I don't know.
I don't think residents.
I think five dollars.
Yeah, but residents.
Are free.
Are free.
So residents are, residents are a couple bucks, outsiders are five bucks. I'm fine with that. So what does that raise? Is that in the one fifteen?
There's a revenue line of ten thousand dollars. We didn't, we have presented a fee structure in the past to council that did have resident and non-resident fees that was defeated by council.
So you don't take ten off the one fifteen, you've already got that figured.
Correct. Sorry, Victor.
Okay. Well, maybe we can use the money from the back.
So the preliminary.
But we should be looking for grants for, you know, I mean, it's beyond its useful life and it benefits the council's desire to. Yeah, it's going to take some serious money, so we should be looking at, at grant money. Uh, there's all kinds of Parks and Recreation grant money out there. That whole thing was built with Parks and Recreation grant money. I think I wrote it, the pool, the boat launch and the uh, marina. It was one grant.
So we've already talked a little bit about the arena when we were talking uh, at a previous work session. I don't know if anybody has specific questions about the arena that you want to go through this evening. We did. One of the things we did talk about is that the revenue is projected pretty high for twenty twenty three at seventy thousand, and that does require significant outreach, marketing and advertising to the Canadian market, uh, which we did budget for. Um, I would certainly encourage you not to increase that. Sorry, that's on G eleven.
Yes.
As Shane has already pointed out, we, there really is only one employee that is dedicated to the recreation department. That is Mackenzie Cole. She is our recreation coordinator.
So the DBW maintains Blackwood is the cleaning and everything?
Yes, sir.
Does the Biskie Center?
No, actually, right now, um, Mackenzie's maintained the center, her own people cleaning the toilets.
Does she drive the gazebo?
Zamboni?
Or zamboni?
We're asking it right now, but we're thinking about training.
She's always wanted to.
Um, another change to point out is that recreation activities on G six, we are proposing to keep all of the camps that we have traditionally done. Um, they will be, there is a fee for attending those, but if the registrations do not um, meet or exceed the cost, the camp will not proceed. We've, we have instituted that over the last two years, but we've been a little lenient with it. Um, this budget will call for if you do not meet the cost, the, the camp will not be offered. So essentially, the, the recreation activities are still in this budget, um, but depending on registrations, all of the camps may not really in the end be offered.
Which is understandable.
Um, Mackenzie, I'm happy to give you an opportunity to talk about anything that you would like to speak about in the recreation budget, and if there are not specific questions from council.
I don't have any questions.
So we have talked a lot about the pool. If, if there are four, five, seven members that would like the pool reinstated, that would be really great to know because that makes a huge difference in what kind of deficit Angela and I are working on for your December fifth amendment.
Well, we may end up making these amendments and, you know, after we hold the hearing and after we've had time to, you know, this is just a workshop.
Oh, absolutely. But if there's direction.
We might come with amendments ourselves and just uh, put the whole thing together.
Okay.
We'll see what happens.
I'd like to see the pool as an option myself, so.
I certainly would.
I would do.
How many kids use that, Mackenzie?
Oh, cats.
I don't think boys and.
Do the boys and girls still there?
They're there every day.
Boys and girls are not there. Maybe four or five kids, but they.
Oh, yeah?
It's very low. So the Boys and Girls Club is pretty much the only reason why the pool's still running, let's be honest.
Oh.
For numbers.
Our numbers are not that low on kids, eh?
I mean.
All the more reason to keep our cost down.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, the boys and.
I would have liked to have known that.
Yeah, they go, the boys and girls, because they're there, what, Tuesday through Friday from noon. Through, yeah, because through noon, because all in that quite a way.
How many for swim, a lot for swim lessons? I mean.
Yeah, we did decent amount of swim lessons. We probably had about forty signed up.
I mean, to talk. I'd still like to see it in there. I know it's a hundred and fifteen thousand, but I mean, it's only one page you're doing it with it in and with it out, right?
We, we can do it with it.
Basically, it's pretty that simple. Let's just do it that way. I mean, at least you look at it, you get the option, you see it both ways.
Does that conclude our workshop for this evening?
Yes, it does.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So our next workshop is just to kind of tie up loose ends uh, following the December fifth meeting.
The uh, what's the, I couldn't, what's the total, I mean, what's the, the cost for the arena? No, no, not the, not the revenue, what the, the cost is, and then I'll take the revenue off.
The cost is a hundred and forty one, six eighty three.
I saw somewhere, it looked like it went up ten thousand dollars from twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three. I can't find it in here. I think I missed a page.
It's G eleven.
G eleven? See, it's not in here. I, somehow it got out, but I read it, so I know that it was ten thousand dollars more.
I think the first question wanted to show that we asked for more money to build the maintenance. There's a future track, I think it's in there for a maintenance issue or something that we wanted more money, I think we got pulled out.
Right, so I mean, okay, if, that, that's fine. That's the way it is.
Building maintenance is proposed at sixteen thousand dollars, uh, which is an increase from twenty two of, of about ten thousand dollars.
And for.
Building maintenance, I think Shane, there's, well, we're doing some work on the doors. There's.
In.
There's, I think there's an issue to boilers, barely paying it off with one issue, so it's original and it's undersized from the building.
Yes.
Uh, I think with the baby, we possibly have to add hot water, because showers run off the same hot water that they use for the zambonis and they fill with the zambonis.
That's the. Those, those are, those are all great answers. I mean.
But we also have some issues with the batteries for the zambonis.
Batteries.
Got to take them to a more.
One major issue with the building, it comes a lot to us, is the sprinklers, it's been running out. It's a lot of nowhere, and a bowl hole, so then we got the council into emergency repair. I think that was upwards of 6,000 this bunch of this year.
Buy a bunch of shark bites. When those pop open, stick them in between.
Have the six inch lines.
Hope for the best.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.